We're going to be in shortly. Mr. Fenders, if you want to start, take us out of the practice session. While we wait for a moment for anybody to log in and come into reviewing meeting remotely. Just a reminder to all board members, your mic phones are turned off. Please turn them on when you're ready to speak, bring them close to your mouth. That'll help with the pickup the sound for anybody viewing online as well as for the video recording that we'll post afterwards. We already have an executive session at the beginning of the meeting as well as one at the end, so we'll talk about that as we go through. Mr. Fenders, do we have anybody that has logged in? We do, okay. Dr. Worthing, whenever you're ready, you can get the meeting.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Blaker. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. These procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 871-0726-8113, and the required password is 427-043. Call it a order, Mr. Blaker.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Dr. Park. Mr. Coen.
Here.
Mr. Cobbler.
Here.
Ms. De Venera.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
And Dr. Worthing.
Here. Adequate notice of this agenda has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on April 20th, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag, Mr. Gallo. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Mr. Blaker tells me, so I need a motion, Mr. Blaker, yes, to recess to executive session. Mr. Kizmarski, Mr. De Silva, second. And... Where will we have that? In here, okay. Mr. Blaker, thank you.
We're going to be having our executive session here in this room for this evening. So for members of the public, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be closing the divided doors of the meeting room. Hold our executive session in here. Dr. Torre, we estimate about?
Twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Approximately twenty, twenty-five minutes we can expect to then reopen the doors, and then we'll resume public session. For anybody who is viewing online, there will still be a recording. However, we're going to pan the camera away and of course turn off all audio when we're here in executive session.
Thank you very much.
End last, so it's a full meeting.
We need to get a wall.
What's your phone?
Mr. Fedders, if you want to unmute those that don't participate through the stream.
I was talking to people. They couldn't hear me.
And Doc, and Worth, when you're ready, we just need a motion to come out of this section.
A motion to reconvene to public session. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We'll just stick with Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Gallo. All right, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. A motion to open meeting to the public, Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. I have to ask, is this pertaining to a resolution on our agenda?
I have worked it to address a resolution.
I see. Okay. And which resolution might that be?
I don't know the number, but it's the paving resolution.
Okay, state your name.
Just give me some leniency, I'll get there. I am David May, president of the town council. I'm here representing the council. We have some other members here, Robert Ferguson, Michelle Paz. Thank you for having us tonight. We are here to address the topic of building use fees that are being charged in Mawa Youth Sports, basically for two sports, basketball and wrestling. The fees they are charged are for additional costs associated with having a custodian on-site during the times the building is in use. I understand that is due to the policy that's been established a long time ago. Just as a background, each year, the school collects, I want to say around $18,000 from youth sports programs. This fee is ultimately paid by the participants of basketball and wrestling. The youth sports boosters, which I'm also currently a board member of, has been paying this fee for years, going back some time, and I believe at one point the fee was even higher. The reason the council is here on this issue is because at our last budget hearing, this fee became a topic of discussion, and ultimately 50 percent of the fee has now been added into the municipal budget. Also part of the discussion was to reach out to the Board of Ed to see how we can work to reduce or eliminate this fee. We believe that there is a good working relationship between the town and the schools. We've worked on numerous things together in the past, the famous traffic light, the school resource officer, and I believe we're working on cornhole boards right now, hopefully.
We are.
All right. And this hopefully can be the next thing to tackle. For the Board's benefit, the way we're looking at this fee is that currently Mawa residents pay taxes to the municipality and schools. Those taxes goes toward operations. Basketball and wrestling parents, who are all Mawa residents, have to pay higher fees for their programs to use the same schools they pay taxes for. And we understand that's based on the policy that's in place. What is the ask tonight? Our ask is to work to set up a meeting between the town and the schools to figure out a better solution. Like I mentioned earlier, we ultimately would like to see the fee eliminated, and we don't come tonight empty-handed. An initial thought is to see how the town could help the school reduce another expense to potentially offset this fee. An example, which points back to your agenda, would be the school parking lots in town. We could look to include the school's parking lots as
Mr. Fedders, if you want to unmute those that are okay participating through the stream.
I was talking to people, they couldn't hear me anyway.
Doc and Worth, when you're ready, we just need a motion to come out of this section.
To reconvene, yes, okay. A motion to reconvene to the public session. Can you hear me now? Yes. We'll just stick with Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Gallo. All right, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Motion to open meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Copeland. I have to ask, is this pertaining to a resolution on our agenda?
I have worked it to address a resolution.
I see, okay. And which resolution might that be?
I don't know the number, but it's the paving resolution.
Okay, could state your name?
Just give me some lead, you see, I'll get there. I am David May, president of the town council. I'm here representing the council. We have some other members here, Robert Ferguson, Michelle Paz. Thank you for having us tonight. We are here to address the topic of building use fees that are being charged in Mawa Youth Sports, basically for two sports, basketball and wrestling. The fees that are charged are additional costs associated with having a custodian onsite during the times the building is in use. I understand that is due to the policy that's been established a long time ago. Just as a background, each year, the school collects, I want to say around eighteen thousand dollars from youth sports programs. This fee is ultimately paid by the participants of basketball and wrestling. The youth sports boosters, which I'm also currently a board member of, has been paying this fee for years, going back some time. And I believe at one point, the fee was even higher. The reason the council is here on this issue is because at our last budget hearing, this fee became a topic of discussion. And ultimately, fifty percent of the fee has now been added into the municipal budget. Also part of the discussion was to reach out to the Board of Ed to see how we can work to reduce or eliminate this fee. We believe here that there is a good working relationship between the town and the schools. We've worked on numerous things together in the past, the famous traffic light, the school resource officer. And I believe we're working on cornhole boards right now, hopefully.
We are.
All right. And this hopefully can be the next thing to tackle. For the board's benefit, the way we're looking at this fee is that currently, Mawa residents pay taxes to the municipality and schools. Those taxes goes toward operations. Basketball and wrestling parents, who are all Mawa residents, have to pay higher fees for their programs to use the same schools they pay taxes for. And we understand that's based on the policy that's in place. What is the ask tonight? Our ask is to work to set up a meeting between the town and the schools to figure out a better solution. Like I mentioned earlier, we ultimately would like to see the fee eliminated, and we don't come tonight empty-handed. An initial thought is to see how the town could help the school reduce another expense to potentially offset this fee. An example, which points back to your agenda, would be the school parking lots in town. We could look to include the school's parking lots as part of the town's road program and ultimately save you guys money on the paving. We recently did this with the library, and we actually saved the library two hundred thousand dollars on their paving fee. So stuff like that, that's what we want to talk about. We'd love to set up a meeting. I'm not promising two hundred thousand, but just...
That's all record.
Yeah. That was just an example of what's happened in the past, you know, oil prices. But anyway. Just want to say that's what we wanted to talk about, and we look forward to working with you and look forward to set up a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May, and we'll have Mr. Bleeker be in touch on that topic and about setting up a meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And thank you for the town council participation tonight. Very much appreciate it. All right, motion to close meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Kizmarski. Dr. DiToro, your report this evening, superintendent.
Yes, thank you very much. Welcome back from spring break. I hope everyone had a wonderful week off. It was well needed for all. I want to start my report by highlighting my favorite part of the week, which took place today. The fifth graders at Joyce Kilmer School asked me to read over their over one hundred and ninety fifth grade argument and advocacy plans. Within their unit, the students researched the components of substantiated research and arguments in order to choose a side and advocate for a better cause. Students also researched different environmentally themed arguments and created their own argumentative essay and advocacy project. What they decided as a group, as a whole grade, was to create the focus of the district needs to create an outdoor learning space for Joyce Kilmer School and all the benefits that that would entail for our students. Those benefits consisted of it would reduce their stress levels that they have in school. It would, being outside benefits their immune system through vitamin D. Being outside also enhances their sleep. They utilized various aspects of research, individual research, research from state agencies, as well as the American Institute of Research and Science. They also identified areas around Joyce Kilmer that they felt like this outdoor classroom would be best suited. What I can tell you with all sincerity is I'm extremely proud of those fifth grade students and extremely proud to work with those fifth grade teachers. What the product in which they were able to pull from our students and help them create is really second to none. From start to finish, from the hook that they embedded in the beginning of the writing, from the supporting details that they embedded throughout the writing, and their conclusion that circled back to their thesis statement was extremely, extremely commendable. So I was able to go up and meet with the entire fifth grade today. And I identified all the areas that I wanted to celebrate. Not only was I able to speak to them, but they had fifth grade representatives that got up and really hit home their points, if I may say so. So with that information, and I shared with them, Mr. Gallo, you would appreciate, I reminded them of our strategic plan and the focus of facilities and creative learning spaces. I told them I was really proud of what they did, and we're going to be looking into the matter with building administration. Building administration, ironically enough, is already working with a Girl Scout troop with a space outside that they want to revitalize and bring up to what our expectations are. But building administration is also looking to add pieces out there that will allow for a classroom or a class to learn. So really exciting opportunity to be with the students, see their passion for trying to push forward an idea that they have. And I talked to them about being an advocate and how to be respectful, how to be informed, and how to deliver your message so everyone feels respected and valued, which was a really great opportunity to talk to our students and appreciate the learning that takes place. So that was my favorite part of this week. To go into the benefits of reducing stress and feeling connected to the school. As people started to drive in, hopefully you got a chance to see the Joyce Kilmer fourth grade social, which is another example of the schools creating opportunities for the students to come together. Just one, the Spotlight Spring Sports is up and running. It's great to see all of our athletes outside either training or competing against other schools. So best of luck to our athletes, but also to all the students who are taking part in extracurricular activities. This is something that I share with the board, and hopefully it's okay for me to share with the community as tentative and something that needs board approval on the May fourth board agenda. To date, we have used two snow days. We have four snow days built into our calendar. After reviewing the remaining calendar, it's my recommendation to allow the district to extend the Memorial Day weekend and identify May twenty seventh as a day off again. That needs board approval, so that's a proposal to the board. This will leave us with one day, one remaining day. And I know everyone says, well, why don't we use that remaining day? Keeping this day in the bank will ensure that if we have an emergency closure due to a power outage or a weather event, we can still hold on to our approved calendar and not impact the end of the year, end date, or graduation. We inquired with the state that if by chance we do use it and those events occur, will we be able to use a virtual day in place of it? They said we are not able to do that. The only way that we are able to do that is if there's three consecutive days due to an emergency that take place. At that time, we then have to petition to the state for approval. So with that being said, I'm recommending to the board, and again, for board approval, that May twenty seventh, which is that Friday, be used as a snow day to extend the Memorial Day weekend. If the board is comfortable, I would like to share that with the community pending board approval. At a courtesy for travel and people who might be going out, that would add a day and enhance their vacation. So that's something that I would like to put up for board approval for myself.
Can we move from the floor to approve that tonight, even though it's not on the agenda? Is there a way to do that? Or can we just, can I move the...
No. I've never done that.
We've never done that before, but I mean, it's such a simple thing. Can we just do it?
I mean, Robert's Rules of Order allow you to make a motion as long as you have a second. That'll see when you know that.
Do I have a motion?
Well, you want to... Yeah, I'll motion to approve it for May twenty seventh to be a...
I might have to ask for that correct first. So do I have a motion for us to approve this?
If you'd like to move.
Like to move, okay, go ahead.
So Robert would make the motion.
Go ahead. Maybe we should ask our town council people first.
I want to get it right.
Who's our expert on raw materials there?
If it needed written, then everyone would have to agree at first.
I'd like to move to approve May twenty seventh as a day off of school to use one of our two remaining snow days.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just rephrase that, what the resolution would read is that we approve a revision to the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar to include May twenty-seventh as a day off with school.
I moved for that.
Do I have a second? Ms. DeVenero, excellent. All in favor? Do you want to take a vote call?
We will lead, we will lead. So Mr. Copeland did the motion.
Ms. DeVenero on the second.
Ms. DeVenero did the second.
Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Mr. Bleeker. Just moving things along here today. You ask, you shall receive.
Mid superintendent report noted.
All but rectification stating.
So roll call for that. Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. DeVenero.
Yes.
Mr. DeSilva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Doc and Worth.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. Bleeker, if I might suggest that we have a resolution on the next one.
On the next one, just to make sure. We'll vote again, just to make sure. But you have part launch to announce.
That communication will go out shortly. The last item that I have for my report is physical education health curriculum statement. There's been heightened discussion in the media and possibly within our township about the New Jersey comprehensive health and physical education standards set forth by the state. Please know that we will be writing curriculum for comprehensive health and PE during the upcoming spring and summer months for K five and nine twelve with the implementation of the first September twenty twenty-two. Our six-eight curriculum was already written last summer and has been implemented at the middle school level this past year. As we have done in the past with our six-twelve grade levels, content topics for our family life units in our health curriculum will be posted on our website for all grade levels and within the parent portal for families to review. At the four-five level, letters go out to the parents with information on the units. If you have any questions about topics that will be covered after reviewing this letter, you can certainly reach out to building administrators and our PE teachers, so they will be able to walk you through specific topics within the unit.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. DiToro. Go on to Mr. Bleeker.
Budget presentation, everybody, yes. We're going to have our second budget presentation, so just give me one moment to...
We'll hop now with our town council people.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. So tonight is the second budget presentation for the twenty-two, twenty-three school budget. As I said at our last meeting, the March twenty-third meeting, this will be the final preliminary budget presentation. We are going to have one more on May fourth, but that's going to be more of a summary of the prior two presentations. And at the May fourth meeting, we will have a resolution for a final adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Budget calendar, just to review, this is identical from our first meeting, March twenty-third. What we did was we did a review of the revenue sources, tax impact, enrollment, debt service, and special revenue as it pertains to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So we're going to discuss special education benefits, personnel, operations, capital projects, and a handful of other items. And on May fourth, as I indicated earlier, we're going to have a summary and adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I will mention now, as I had said at our twenty-third, at the March twenty-third meeting, we submitted the budget following that meeting to the county board of education for a review at their level. That came back last week while we're on during break. I'm happy to say that it has been approved at their level. So any changes that we would have to make at the May fourth meeting would be any that the board deems necessary. Starting off with special education for this evening. Costs in special education include out-of-district tuition, any related or extraordinary services that are needed for our special ed students such as speech, physical and occupational therapy, the ESS program that we have at Mawa High School and Round Mill Ridge Middle School, and any one-to-one services that our students may need. General administration of the CST team and program, district-wide staff, as well as case managers at the individual schools. Our pre-school disabled program at Lenny P Meadows School. Any students that are in our self-contained classes throughout the K twelve grade levels. We have right now approximately forty-five students who are in a self-contained class at one of the grade levels. In total, the special education cost represents approximately nineteen point three percent of the total proposed budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Going a little bit deeper into the out-of-district tuition costs, we currently have one hundred and six students that attend a tuition-based school outside of Mawa. These are both special ed and general ed students. Sixty-two special ed that are at placements such as private schools with disabled, Burke County Special Service locations, or public schools that offer a program that meets the students' needs. We also have forty-four regular ed students. These are high school age students who have elected to, have applied and been accepted to attend Burke County Technical and Vocational Schools or Burke County Academies. For the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the tuition budget is a little bit over sixty, six point two million dollars. The next category we will look a little bit closer at is employee benefits. Employee benefits include contractual benefits, health prescription and dental benefits that our employees elect to take from the district. For note, for health benefits, we have approximately three hundred and forty employees that currently receive health benefits for themselves and for their dependents from the district. Social security and pension payments that are made from the board. For pension systems, we do make a payment on behalf for the PERS system. Tuition reimbursement as part of any contractual agreements. And payment for any accumulated sick time when employees retire or resign from the district, if they're eligible for it, are all under the employee benefits umbrella and account lines. For next year's budget, the employee benefits is budgeted a little bit over ten and a half million dollars or fourteen point two percent of the budget for next year. Okay, staffing. Staffing is probably the largest single portion of the budget. For next year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have budgeted thirty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Approximately fifty-two point four percent of the total budget is for staffing and for salaries. This represents four hundred and ninety-nine staff. They are, of course, across three collective bargaining associations that we have. The Mawa Education Association, which for those that, if you're not familiar, cover all of our instructional teachers, our nurses, bus drivers, maintenance and consorts staff that are Mawa employees, as well as secretarial staff. The Mawa Administrators Association, which is all principals and assistant principals, as well as the director of guidance. And lastly, the Mawa Supervise Association, which covers all supervisors. The last category that we have, which is included in the four hundred and ninety-nine staff mentioned earlier, are any paraprofessionals and any staff members who hold an independent contract directly between themselves and the board. Each year for staffing, we have several meetings that Dr. Farrar leads, along with the principals and administration, to discuss what the educational, curricular, and enrollment needs are going to be for the following school year. As we went through that process this year, it was determined that we would, with some staff that could be decreased because of enrollment, other staffing needs that would be increased for the curricular or educational needs that we had discussed, that for next year, we have a net increase of one point two positions within the district. Transportation. I wanted to highlight transportation for this year because there is a, it is a large single section of our budget. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the budget for transportation is four million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. This covers all transportation, both to and from our schools, as well as transportation that is needed to send any students to out-of-district placements for field trips, for athletics. All of this is included within this budget line and budget account category. Approximately six percent of the total budget. We have sixty-five bus routes to our schools. These are to our six district schools. Many of them, of course, are tiers. We don't have sixty-five buses on the road, but we have one bus that may go to Mawa High School, then Round Mill Ridge, let's say, and then one of our elementary schools, or some other combination of that. Sixty-two routes for our out-of-district placements, as well as non-public schools and county schools. We do have for non-public schools, for any residents that do live in Mawa, we do by mandate have to provide them or offer them transportation to non-public placements. If we cannot secure transportation, we would offer them compensation through what's called Aiden Loop. Mawa, we have four in-house drivers, as well as one additional driver who serves for many of our athletic programs, as well as sub suite drivers, fleet of ten buses. And within the budget, we are budgeting to replace one of our fifty-four passenger buses. For background, buses do have a lifespan and an life expectancy. They are by mandate and DMV code. They cannot exceed more than fourteen years of service. So we have one bus that is approaching that mark. Still have a couple of years to go with it, but knowing with the supply chain issues that are occurring throughout the nation and throughout the country, we wanted to budget now within the twenty-two, twenty-three year with the expectation of it being delivered sometime during the year and being put into full service for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. A few other categories to highlight, not to go into as much detail, but just to highlight because they are significant individual categories, is instructional support, curriculum, guidance, multimedia, professional development, that represents about seven point two percent of the budget. School operations, which represents the individual school operations for each of the school main offices and things of that. of the, um, school main offices and things of that, uh, $2,521,000, I'm sorry, million, about 3.4% of the budget. District operations and technology is just over $3 million or 4.1%. We have our maintenance, custodial, and grounds, a little bit over $7 million, and extracurricular athletics, which is, um, just under, uh, one and a half million dollars. Okay, capital projects. Uh, within the budget for next year, we do have to itemize and, um, identify any capital projects that we are expecting to fund within the next school year. Uh, for the 22-23 budget, we do have two projects that we are identifying that we're going to withdraw funds for. Uh, those are both HVAC replacement projects at Betsy Ross and George Washington Elementary Schools. Uh, we do have some hour funding that will, um, offset, uh, the cost of these budgets, I'm sorry, the cost of these projects, however, we wanted to include the full cost, uh, as a draw from capital reserve, and then any funds that we are able to, um, offset by using grant and funds, which circle back to the capital reserve once the project is completed. Uh, those projects are very similar in size, working with our engineering team, land associates who's assisting us with this, uh, project, they're, each project is estimated at about 1.6 million dollars, so it would be a $3.2 million total withdrawal for these two projects. And while we're on the topic, I wanted to just give a brief update on, uh, projects from the 21-22 budget that were budgeted. So ongoing projects for 21-22, we have a grants and replacement, which we're still, uh, currently working on. We're in the, um, uh, design review phase right now. Prior to tonight's meeting, the facilities committee met with Mr. Melitier, Mr. Pascal, as well as land associates, the engineering firm who's assisting with this project, to review where the plans are right now. Uh, we're hoping to have that bid, um, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, and we'll have more information for the full board because that is a, um, higher-profile project, it's gonna be something that our entire community can hopefully benefit from. So we will have a separate presentation to soon boarding, um, so the full board is aware of what the scope of that project is. Track resurfacing, this is also being, uh, currently worked on as well and near completion, the design is, um, nearly finished. 300 weighing HVAC replacement at Joyce Kilmer, this project is well underway. Um, I just received notice from Mr. Romero that many of the materials have, are onsite and with the vendor, so we are, uh, very much waiting for installation of that project to begin shortly after school ends. Uh, they were able to make a, um, a good dent in the project during spring recess and lay the groundwork for a lot of things to occur right when school ends, so we're, um, that project can move along very nicely. And then the last project that was, again, budgeted within the 21-22 budget that we're working on right now is a partial exterior window and storefront replacement. Uh, for those that might recall, we recently awarded this at the February board meeting to CNM Doors. Uh, they are working with, um, our architect in this case, uh, Mike Melman from Teparski and Melman, to finalize the plans, and, uh, we're looking forward to having this work done this summer. Uh, that's again a partial replacement, Betsy Ross, George Washington, and Ramapo Ridge Okay, um, we have over the past couple meetings and months also, um, spoken regularly about our strategic planning, and we wanted to highlight as we went through the budget process, um, how the budget process was, uh, worked, uh, hand-in-hand with our strategic plan and how we, um, really kept it by our side to look to make sure that we were addressing some of the goal statements and make sure that we, um, um, worked that into the budget where possible and really made a, made a connection and a tie with the budget to the strategic, to the strategic plan. What I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna briefly read the goal statement for each of the strategic plan items, uh, highlight a couple areas, and then show how the 22-23 budget is supporting those goals. Uh, for facilities, uh, our goal statement was to create a safe, inspiring, institute-centric, progressive learning environment. Uh, what we're doing to support that through the 22-23 budget is we're utilizing, um, some of the, um, forecasting, uh, that we have put together for roofing, paving, and HVAC to really identify and regularly, um, determine what projects we wanted to do and when, make sure we can fund that. We're increasing efficiency and use of our interior and exterior spaces. Um, we really wanted to make a, a close look as we're having changes in enrollment, as we're having some change in staffing, to make sure that we are, um, placing those staff in, in locations that are the most efficient, uh, use throughout the district and, uh, for their use for what their, their job entails. As well as for exterior spaces and interior spaces for instructional purposes, again, making sure that we're making the most efficient use. Uh, we're also accessing maintenance reserve and using that. Maintenance reserve is something that we created, uh, about two years ago with the, um, board's, uh, approval and support, uh, to help fund some projects that, um, might be unanticipated or just as a, another funding mechanism where we can purposefully, um, put money there at the end of the year if we have money available and use it to access for some projects. Uh, as you might see on the board agenda for tonight, uh, we do have a resolution to withdraw some money from that to fund some paving and roofing projects that we are, um, expecting to, to begin. For the SEL part of our, uh, budget and strategic planning, um, goal statement to foster and support learning environment that empowers our students to be safe physically and emotionally. Where our 22-23 budget supports this is it supports and maintains many things that we have begun in the, in the, um, within the last year or two, uh, maintains any professional development that we have related to SEL, um, the parent academy and community wellness offerings that we have, uh, begun, particularly through the Hackensack, uh, University Medical Center, and also provides additional supports, uh, with, again, another item on tonight's agenda is the creation of a new position, a school counselor for the K-3 level, um, is another, um, uh, connection between, uh, the budget supporting and area of, um, the strategic plan. Community connections, um, can we mention again to briefly, uh, highlight some portions of the goal statement, uh, to create enriching collaborations for our students and to engage community-based experts. Uh, the Thunderbird Partnership has really, really done very well for us since its inception. Uh, we continue with the 22-23 to support that and expand it, uh, into, into other areas and to bring in, uh, great more partnerships with the community. And we're also looking to, um, pilot internships, extra ships, and job shadowing opportunities for our students beginning in the summer of '22. Those are some things that we're currently working on, and we're looking forward to, um, uh, seeing them, um, come to fruition. Okay, and, okay, uh, curriculum instruction and instruction I skipped over, um, goal statement for curriculum instruction, uh, develop a rich and diverse standard-based curriculum that challenges inspires children through use of 21st century learning opportunities. Uh, where our 22-23 budget supports this is, uh, we're gonna continue our in-house writing of curriculum, uh, to align with those standards. We've done that in-house for the sack, past several years, using the expertise and knowledge of our, uh, staff to write curriculum specific for Mawa. Uh, continued support and availability of technology at all grade levels. Um, we have our, uh, most recent lease that is going to be coming up, um, gonna be ending their current lease, we were able to renew again for next year, so we're continuing that. Uh, the pathways to enrollment and option-two programs at Mawa High School, again, is, is continues to be supported through the budget and continue to assess outdoor learning opportunities as well as enhance, enhancements of our resources. Uh, again, wanted to really make sure that we regularly tie the budget to the strategic plan where we were able to. Okay, with that, that is the end of tonight's presentation. Uh, as I said earlier, we will have one more, but it will be a summary of what we have spoken, uh, at the first two presentations, and, uh, the adoption of the budget would occur at that meeting, and it would be implemented shortly after that. Any questions from members of the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Thank you, Mr. Bleeker.
Um, Dr. Morthee, before we leave, I just have one other thing.
Sure. Okay. So, back to Mr. Bleeker.
Uh, I wanted to take a moment and, uh, acknowledge and thank some of the hard work by the maintenance and custodial staff. Through their efforts, um, we, they were able to, and the support of the Board of Education, uh, we were able to embark in a LED lighting upgrade, um, where we went out, we purchased many of the lights, we did a lot of the installation ourselves, did that in-house. Uh, where possible, we did have to bring in some, uh, contractors to assist us and get us over the finish line because we had deadlines to meet to, uh, qualify for some grant opportunities that were out there, but we did apply for those grant, and we received, um, a few weeks ago, uh, check from New Jersey Clean Energy, amount of $130,000 to, as a, uh, grant, uh, reimbursement to help offset some of the costs that we have for that, uh, lighting upgrade. So, uh, thank you very much for our maintenance staff. Again, a lot of the work was done in-house, um, and their work for applying for this grant, um, seeing that it was out there, and that was an opportunity where we can, uh, really make a great investment, um, in our schools. So, thank you to them, and, uh, again, great, uh, great acknowledgement that they, everybody should be aware of.
Uh, second question, is there an easy way for us to, you know, going forward to see how much actual energy savings there were from field style lights to LEDs? I mean, I know the quality of light is, is way better, which, I mean, that's a benefit in and of itself as far as the actual savings, there, anything like, uh, an idea?
Off the top of my head, um, Mr. Rissella, the best way I can see is just looking at our energy bills as they come in on a monthly basis to see what the usage is, um, so we can certainly take a look at that and compare it year over year to see, uh, what the improvement has been. Thank Dr. Morthee, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Sorry, I interrupted you. Um, and thank you very much for your second, uh, part two of our budget presentation. Thank you very much. Um, now we go on to Dr. Fair, Assistant Superintendent's report.
Yes, you will see, um, the general items 18A through A, we have five retirements to announce. Uh, our first is Elise Dashes. Uh, Joyce Kilmer, thanks, Ms. Dashes, for her 35 years of service to the Joyce Kilmer Community and the Mawa Public Schools. Ms. Dashes serves as the building's reading specialist friend, um, and what many JK staff members refer to as Mawa Bear, who will be leaving us for a relaxing retirement, hopefully on the beaches of Puerto Rico. Elise has been a voice for the teacher community and a strong support for all staff members. Elise is proactive, always has a positive attitude, is always willing to lend a helping hand, and always has snacks available. No issues are too big and no struggle too small. She always works her magic to try and make everything better, even if all she can offer is a hug. We wish Elise well in her next venture in the years to come. Next, we have Mrs. Rosine Richter, um, often referred to as Roe. Uh, she's a valued staff member of Lenape Meadows School who actually started in district as a paraprofessional at Betsy Ross School. During her 19-year career working in Mawa Public Schools, Roe helped support and positively influence many of our students' lives. She was a dedicated staff member who volunteers her time at many school events and taught summer sessions in addition to her teaching responsibilities. We will miss her and wish her nothing but the best in Roe's retirement. Third, we have, uh, Mr. Bill Howe. Uh, according to JK's staff, to say that Mr. Howe will be missed is an understatement. He has dedicated almost 25 years to the Mawa Public Schools. Bill's energy, imagination, and creativity and his approach to teaching is his legacy, and Bill is known as someone you can always count on for a smile or an interesting story. Those of you who've spoken to Bill know he has plenty of interesting stories. Um, he is known to have a can-do energy and always puts kids first. He will truly be missed, but we are excited for his next journey in the years after Mawa. Uh, we wish him the best of luck in Virginia, filled with lots of good times to come. Next, we have a Mawa High School retirement, um, Mrs. Katita Morgan, who is, uh, a chem, a chemistry teacher at Mawa High School. Uh, she is known to work tirelessly, tirelessly on behalf of her students to prepare them in science. She has taken a leadership role in our chemistry professional learning community with laboratory experiments, demonstrations, curriculum, and assessments. Karen arrives early, stays late, and works diligently to prepare the best experiences for our students. Karen is highly professional, dedicated, persistent, and intelligent, uh, who serves as a great role model for our students as both a teacher and a chemist. Uh, we wish Karen nothing but happiness in her retirement as well. Um, and last, but certainly not least, uh, we have, uh, Mrs. Kelly McClanahan, who is a Mawa graduate. Uh, we thank Mrs. McClanahan for her 26 years of service to the Mawa Public Schools. Uh, Kelly often talks about all that Mawa means to her and her family, but it is Kelly who means so much to JK. Being a student of the Mawa Schools and then returning both as a teacher and a parent is a testament to her dedication to this community. Over the years, Kelly positively impacted the lives of thousands of children, both in the classroom and on the field or court. While we hope that Kelly will continue to be a sports fan at the district sporting events, we wish her all the best as she takes her well-deserved time off with her family and friends. So, um, I want to thank all five retirees. With that, though, you'll see that we have 10 new hires on this agenda. Um, we are in the midst of hiring season. Our leadership team, who I'm really proud of, has had a really nice job of really selecting the best and greatest talent out there for our kids. Uh, so we anticipate that we will have anywhere between another 10 to 15 hires on the May 4th agenda. Um, we, we've already offered some positions to, to staff members to, to place them on that agenda, so we're, we're really excited. I want to make a, a highlight of a student, uh, over at Mawa High School. He, uh, has achieved something really great. Uh, his name is Sam Chuck, uh, who is a senior. So, uh, he created two short films, uh, he produced them, and he, uh, recently has been selected for two film festivals, the Count Basie Center Teen and College Film Festival down in Red Bank, and the Ridgewood International Film Festival. Uh, the County Basie Center screenings will take place at 7:00 PM this Friday, uh, on Saturday, uh, at 4:00 PM, and at noon on Sunday. Uh, then next Wednesday evening, Sam's work will be shown at 7:30 PM as part of the Ridgewood International Film Festival's showcase of elementary, middle, and high school students. Uh, what's so cool is, uh, Sam obviously plans on studying film, uh, at Emerson College this fall, so we're really proud of him. Um, if you have time, uh, check out any of those, any of those events. And last, but certainly, certainly not least, um, I'm already raving about the talent that we've hired thus far, um, but, uh, generally, what we do is we like to introduce a little more formally, um, new members to our administrative team. So, we have Ms. Spindler in the audience. Tracy, if you want to just, you can stand and wave, that's all. Yeah, so everyone knows who Tracy is. Uh, Tracy, uh, currently serves as our payroll, payroll specialist in the business office, um, and we are recommending her for your approval as our new supervisor of transportation. With a bachelor's degree in biological sciences from Montclair State University, I'm currently enrolled in Rutgers University's School Supervisor of Transportation Certification coursework, Ms. Spindler demonstrated throughout the interview process an undeniable professionalism, an emphasis on clear and ongoing communication, and a recognized importance in creating systems as a department leader in the district. Her responses to both transportation and leadership questions align clearly with our district. In fact, in Ms. Spindler's cover letter in applying for this position, she referenced how she made purposeful efforts to streamline procedures from a payroll perspective, and in her responses to interview questions, Ms. Spindler clearly defined critical opportunities to create and co-create systems for and with her transportation department. I can say on behalf of Mr. Bleeker, uh, Dr. DiToro, Ms. Rizzo, Dr. Govino, uh, and obviously myself, we are so very proud of this well-deserved accomplishment for Ms. Spindler and welcome her to our central office administrative team. And that is my report.
Awesome. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Spindler. You're welcome, uh, in your new role. Congratulations.
Will everybody in the district still get paid?
Oh, okay, so payroll, is that, is that a concern? Uh, and thank you, Dr. Fair, for your report. President's report, um, I actually, I'm gonna be brief. Um, I'm getting, you'll be excited. Um, all right, so, um, I would suggest, go look on the Twitter feed when you have some time, um, there is a whole list of Honors Future Problem Solvers and Honors Community Problem Solving, uh, winners who were at the competition and are now going on to international competitions. So, uh, the list is, I mean, very impressive, quite long, actually, so go check that out. The other thing is, um, the robotics team, this is the T-Birds 1672, participated at their first Mid-Atlantic District Championships at Stabler Arena in Lehigh University in PA, and I think this was their first, uh, participation at that event, so congratulations to them as well. Um, and that's all I have. Let's move on, board committee reports. Mr. Copley.
I had to. Oh, geez. Uh, for...
Excuse me. First is from Transportation Committee. I didn't get a chance last meeting to thank Dr. Di Toro, Dr. Morty and Mr. Bleeker for your support forming this committee. I also wanted to thank Mr. De Silva, Mr. Gallo and Ms. Davinero for volunteering to join the committee. We'll be meeting for the first time next Tuesday morning to start the process. And Ms. Spindler, congratulations. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Throwing you right through the fire. My second report is from Communication, or from Communities, excuse me, or Community Corner. National Administrative Professional Days, either today or next week, depending on what calendar you look at. Regardless, we want to take a minute to recognize and thank all of our administrative professional staff. These are the people that keep our district organized and moving on a daily basis. Most of their work goes unappreciated and unnoticed, but they're the absolute heartbeat of our schools. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone and thank you for all that you do every day.
It never goes unappreciated.
Not here. Friday's Earth Day. The first Earth Day was celebrated in nineteen seventy when a United States Senator from Wisconsin organized a national demonstration to raise awareness about environmental issues. By the end of nineteen seventy, the US government had created the Environmental Protection Agency. So, please take a couple minutes to talk to your kids about what we as a community can do to protect our environment. This Friday, the Winter Guard and Winter Indoor Percussion will be performing for staff, students and friends at the high school. U-Sports registration is currently open for spring clinics, summer camps and fall sports. You can find a link to the registration on the district's community organization page, I think it's called, or community page. The town is also hosting, excuse me, on April twenty-third, the town will be hosting a paper shredding, styrofoam collection and seedling tree giveaway event at Town Hall from nine to one. The town is also hosting their annual townwide garage sale on April thirtieth. You can find that registration form on the website. This was a fun one. The Mawa Public Library is hosting a stuffed friends sleepover. Kids could drop off their stuffed friends this Friday and pick them up on Saturday. And lastly, there are a bunch of fundraisers going on currently for a lot of our community organizations. Please find them and support any organization any way you can. That's all I got. Thank you.
Just the stuff there.
Just stuff animals. Not the kids. The kids drop off their stuffed.
Animals, they don't stay with them. Just clarify.
Yeah, the stuffed animals get a sleepover on their own at the library. Stuffed friends, not animals.
Stuffed friends.
Not just animals, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Copeland. Any other Board Committee reports? Mr. Gallo, perhaps?
Just quickly, Kyle mentioned that the committee has been reviewing, along with Roger and John Pascal, the designs of the proposed grandstand project at the high school. It's coming along nicely and hopefully we're still on schedule to get a bid out the door in May sometime, per award in June. It's going to be a transformative project at the high school. We're looking, I can tell that the committee is very deeply involved in the details of this project. Maybe we've crossed a line or two, but I think for the benefit of the community, everybody's voice in this project has added to the quality of the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. Do you have any other Board Committee reports? Mr. Denise?
Policy has five policies on tonight's agenda for our first reading. This is basically just a continuation of our review of the six thousand series, mainly just formatting and punctuation changes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denise. All right, if no one else, I will report on Instruction and Curriculum, Special Ed Committee Meeting. We met yesterday for our April meeting. Couple things to highlight. One is the accelerated math program, JK fourth and fifth grade. There's a projected curriculum alignment and a program purchase of big ideas for accelerated math. So, basically, at this point, fourth, K through fifth uses everyday math. Sixth through eighth uses big ideas. So, two slightly different programs. So, the proposal is that in fourth grade, they're now going to cover concepts of fourth grade and fifth grade and the fifth grade accelerated math program will now cover concepts of fifth and sixth grade, allowing kids to have a better transition when they go to sixth grade and move on to the big ideas program. All right, so the other was creation of a position that's actually on our board agenda, our K through three school counselor position. And that was also, I think, in Kyle's budget presentation. I think this came out of a very successful contribution that has been at the counselor position at JK. And I'm going to mention Craig Alfano, who's done a fantastic job with that program and because of that, now the request is for us to have a K through three school guidance counselor. So, that's on our agenda tonight. Hiring updates we received from Dr. Fair and I just want to thank Dr. Fair personally, Dr. Bavino, Dr. Di Toro, Mr. Bleeker and Ms. Rizzo for all their participation in that process. And it was very good to hear that our positions by early May, we're going to be fully staffed for September positions, especially given that there is a lot of conversation out there about a teacher shortage, et cetera. So, kudos to our team to getting that done quickly and being ready for September. The last thing is the dual enrollment program, incurred pathways. There is now a tab on the Mawa High School website regarding information for that. There was also an event that Mr. Goliata had for parents. And so, again, you know, take a look, there's a lot of information on our website whenever you have questions about anything that we're doing. And that's it?
Actually, one more.
Mr. De Silva. Committee report.
We have an executive committee report.
Oh.
President.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. De Silva. I appreciate that.
Seventeen Q is the first reading of bylaws. So, similar to what the Policy Committee does, the Policy Committee has been reviewing section by section of our huge volumes of policies. It's been a while since we've looked at our board bylaws. So, the Executive Committee has taken that project on and seventeen Q are the first three, four or five that we're recommending some minor changes to. Most of them are just review, so there aren't any changes to those that aren't here. Anytime there's a change, just like the Policy Committee, we'll post them here.
Thank you very much, Mr. De Silva. Appreciate that. Okay, Board Member remarks, additional comments? Mr. Copeland.
Just real quick, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Howe on his retirement. My son this year has Mr. Howe for math and science and his teaching approach has lit a fire in my son for math and science, to the point where he looks forward to going to school and he looks forward to having Mr. Howe as a teacher. He also comes home and he has found the math version of the popular word game Wordle. It's called Nerdle. And he makes his father and his mother do it with him and try to figure out what the problems are. If you think you know math, go look up Nerdle because it'll humble you. But I just want to congratulate and thank Mr. Howe for all his years and the impact that he's had on our kids and wish him nothing but the best in his retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland, Mr. Gallo.
I have a series of items.
Series of items.
As I sit back, relax and enjoy the show.
Oh, okay. Would you like to switch seats perhaps?
First, I'd like to just echo on Dr. Di Toro's report about the fifth graders. So, I hope at some future board meeting, maybe we'll see those fifth graders present a project plan for their outdoor classroom idea and I would invite them to do that. So, a little feedback back to them. I think that's a very exciting project and it's in our strategic plan and we're looking for all sorts of inspiring learning spaces and I'm glad that the students have prioritized that in their learning. I also want to echo the commentary on Bill Howe. I mean, when you read the letters of retirement from these long-term staff members, they are laced with some level of melancholy, but also great appreciation for the time that they had engaging with our students and especially also with their colleagues. In Bill's case, my interaction with Bill has been primarily through negotiations and Bill made reference to that in his letter. And I just want to echo his, that it was a great pleasure and it created a great environment to have Bill, to be able to have Bill in the process because we were able to create dialogue to move to a successful contract renewal. He was obviously a member of a team, but he was clearly a leader of that effort and I want to thank him personally for the contribution he made to getting us to the goal. Finally, I just wanted to swing by Dennis for a moment. So, at curriculum.
Swing by? What is swing by?
At curriculum the other day, Dennis and the team were able to announce that we have, we are well on our way to having the district fully staffed for school in September. A remarkable achievement. Now, most of the time, most of the people in the room were talking about Dennis's contribution to this effort, his design of the strategy that the district put in place to get us into a spot. Obviously, he relied on the entire team to participate in the reviews and the interviews and so on, but it was his initiative, his genius, his experience that brought us, created a plan, a strategy to get us to a spot where we can start school in September, fully staffed. It's a remarkable achievement and Dennis, even when he presented today, didn't take credit for any of the effort he put into it. And we owe Dennis a tremendous amount of thanks and appreciation to, A, get quality people to come here and B, to make this process so successful in a timely way so that in the summer, we can focus on a couple of holes, but for the most part, we're ready to go. And I just want to say thank you, Dennis, and you should take more credit sometimes.
Thank you.
Sorry about the long report.
I have two minutes. One minute.
At this point, let's go around the room, Mr. Kizmarski.
I'm going to wear a couple hats real quick, one being Board Administrator, the other being the Town Administrator, as you were all well aware.
Do you need to get up?
No, 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 it's because I have you all here and you all here and the people there on video.
Okay.
Several months ago, a notice went out from the township regards to well nineteen and the chemicals that they found in the compound. Another notice is going out this week, but we are still out of compliance. For the record, we're out of compliance in the state of New Jersey. In forty-eight other states, there would be no issue. That being said, not only is the issue being, there's a remedy in place, it's going to take some time. We went out to the four water tanks that supply the water to our residents, our businesses and our schools. And all four water tanks are supplying the blended water that is well within New Jersey state standards. So, while there was never an issue with drinking or using the water, I just want to reassure everyone, especially out of the four tanks that it's coming from, that there's absolutely no issue. So, I just want you to be aware because you may get questions again this week. This is my back out. Tonight, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kizmarski.
Since we're throwing bouquets.
Yeah, go ahead.
Going to throw them on at Mr. Kizmarski. So, this has been a hot button of mine for a long time. We don't make a big deal of this, but it's really irritating.
Not me.
Well, sometimes.
Are you sure we're fighting now?
No, no. When you're at drop-off in the morning at all of our schools, we have the twenty-five mile an hour school zone signs with the flashing lights. Now, one would think, they're flashing lights, how difficult can it be? Well, to go back a couple of years real quick, we got a grant from Safe Pathways to School Grant and we installed, the township installed all of these signs on, you know, before and after. Yeah, each of the schools. Now, the equipment that was installed was required as part of this grant, so he couldn't choose what equipment he wanted. It was this equipment. Well, the flashing lights, you actually have to get licenses for the software for each of these signs to make the lights flash, which, you know, it's a three-year license and it's a whole thing. They have to come out from California to actually renew the license physically on each sign. And then, when the lights go out, it's a whole other thing. So, Mr. Kizmarski, as the township administrator, finally got all of those stupid lights to blink when they're supposed to. Like I said, it's a stupid thing, but it is a safety thing and it was a much, much bigger project than it, you know, than it really should have been and thank you for.
I can't directly take credit other than putting in the order in August, but everything was back ordered because of everything else going on in this world. They just came out yesterday, so I thank Glenn Dawson from our EPW for staying on that, but it's, I'm glad they worked.
To make the lights flash.
To make the lights flash.
Excellent.
But they are flash?
That's very important. I thought maybe you got the license and were outchanging the lights yourself. I thought that's a possibility.
I just started to burn swords.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other Board Member remarks? Okay. All right, hold business. The minutes from the March twenty-third meeting. Mr. Bleeker.
I need a.
Oh, yeah, motion and a second. Boy, it's getting late. Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Denise. And now the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Segun.
Same.
Mr. Copeland. Ms. Davinero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morty.
Yes. All right, let's take new business. I think we are A through LL this evening. No, no. Yes, okay, yes. I was correct the first time. All right, do we have a motion on new business, A through LL? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Denise. Questions? Yes.
We'll add that as a very.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Copeland, questions?
I have two questions on seventeen JJ, that's regarding the paving.
Good.
The first one, can you give us more detail exactly what this project is at JK at the high school?
Sure.
So, the area that we're looking to do at Joyce Kilmer School is across the front of the school, some of the parking space is there. It's going to be a continuation of the project that we started doing last year. If anybody recalls, where we took some curbs out, right on the far side of the basketball court. We took some curbs out there. There's an island right there that was removed. We did some perimeter paving right there just as the project was completed. This is going to continue paving for anybody leaving Joyce Kilmer at that area, coming back out to the main driveway and leaving you from there. Over at the high school, the area that we're looking to address is when you're coming in off of Ridge Road, going across the front of the high school as well. So, basically, the bus lane or the drop-off lane at the high school for this area that we're looking to make.
Based on what Mr. May had offered to possibly lump our paving projects in with the town's road project, would it serve us to table this approval of this contract till May fourth to give you some time to discuss that with the town and see if there is any cost savings that we could realize?
It would have to be a discussion to see if there is that opportunity. I don't know where the township is right now as far as have they awarded the full project and is there any opportunity to add more projects? I'd have to have that discussion.
And there's additional projects in the future.
Right, and pardon me?
I'm doing additional projects in the future.
Yeah, but do we need to approve this tonight to get these projects going in June or July?
In order to have them done during the summer, asphalt and paving anywhere really has to be scheduled out pretty early on. So, in order to secure that we can do these projects this summer, that's why my recommendation is that we have it this evening. Thank you.
Anything else?
The JK, the waterproofing technologies for the roof at the high school and that's your us. And that's something that Finance Facilities has been working with and Kyle has been putting a ton of work into, really looking at our facilities and scheduling out, sort of forecasting the things that we're going to be needing to do so that we're being proactive instead of reactive and being able to budget for this stuff prospectively. And this is one.
And this is one of the first pieces of that work, one of the first projects of that forecasting process. So, thank you for, for working so hard on that, as it's, I think it's going to be a great thing for us going forward.
Thank you. I just also wanted to highlight DD. We had the current, I'm pronouncing it wrong, HUN, HUN, Mathematics Fund donation. So again, always appreciated when we have a donation to our district, and this was in the amount of $5,000, so.
And EE as well.
And EE as well, thank you. I saw that one, and I, and EE as well, the Mitchell Modacet Science Fund Foundation. So that's a donation, that's also in the amount of $5,000. So again, thank you to those who donate to our district, we do appreciate that. All right, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Mr. Blaker.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Davenera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morethy.
Yes. All right, on new business personnel, I thought we would take A through E separately as the retirements. And again, very close, but all of them are, I mean, close to or over 20 years of service to this district, so I think it's very notable. I, I think my, my children had Ms. Cutida Morgan as a teacher, I've had excellent interactions with Mr. Howe. No one has mentioned the snake that, or the snake sub, because that was kind of the vein of my existence when the snakes came home.
There's apparently some raffle he's doing to.
Oh, is, is, what's going to happen with the snakes? I was kind of wondering.
The couple family would not be taking it, so.
Ah, okay, all right.
Put a meeting around.
Okay, I figured, oh, a raffle for the snakes.
Yeah.
Well, again, Mr. Howe, inventive, energized. The other thing I really appreciated with Mr. Howe is he really truly enjoyed the volley, and I would go into the school to do the volley, and he really wanted to make the volley like a whole school effort at, you know, JK. And he just had so much enthusiasm for, you know, those kinds of things, diversity, equity, so anyway, a real gem, and we're going to miss all of these wonderful personnel. So, A through E, shall we take? Do we have a motion? Mr. Copeland and Ms. Zico, second. Enjoy retirement to all.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Davenera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
I'd like to wish each of the five retirements a long and happy and healthy retirement. Mr. Howe, you know, like Mr. Gallo said, we had the opportunity to work with Mr. Howe in a couple of different functions, obviously as part of the negotiations team, where, you know, those conversations were always, you know, definitely productive and respectful, and, and, you know, he was always a big part of that, even, you know, stuff like on field days. You know, he always, he always had a different way of marching his class across the field at the end of the day, and everybody always got a kick out of it. So he's, you know, Dr. Fair said that, you know, they mentioned there were five retirements for 10 new hires, and, you know, 10 new hires is a good start to replace those five teachers because there are some real big issues developing. So congratulations to each of them, and yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morethy.
Yes. Now, under new business, let's take E. This is a row, I think we are on to.
Yeah, we did. We started with that.
F, thank you. Through CCC, so we are triple letters. CCC. F through CCC, do we have a motion? Mr. Denise, second by Ms. Davenera. Your call, please.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Zico.
Yes, and may I make a comment here? So this is in reference to AAA. We're all aware of the increase in anti-Asian incidents in our country, and I imagine that students don't really understand what it's like not to be part of the majority, so I would like to welcome the formation of this new Mala High School Club, the Asian American Awareness Club, with its goal of, of proactively educating and forming safe and comfortable environments for the students. It also meets one of our strategic learning goals of having, creating a safe and comfortable environment for our students. So I welcome this club because I think every child should feel safe and comfortable. And my vote is yes, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Copeland.
Yes, and thank you to the volunteers over at JK. I think these volunteers have something to do with an Eagle Scout project. I think it may be an outdoor classroom, so I think that's, I think that's progressing already. See what the fifth graders are able to do so quickly?
Almost as fast as we improve a vacation day.
Yes.
Ms. Davenera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morethy.
Yes, and second to what Mr. Zico said. Thank you, Ms. Zico, for mentioning that. Okay. But we have one additional.
We have one additional item of resolution that is going to be walked in this evening. This resolution has not been on the agenda, so I will read it into the record, and Dr. Morethy afterwards, if you could ask for a motion in a second on the resolution.
Sure.
The resolution reads, "That upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Mala Board of Education affirms the decision of the superintendent of schools as it pertains to HIV case number LM-212207."
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion on this is DDD? Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Mr. Blaker. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Davenera.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
And Dr. Morethy.
Yes. Public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues for school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This portion of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Do we have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Zico.
John Feison, 20 Falcon Court, Mala, New Jersey, land of the free, home of the brave. I've been reading some headlines recently where the governor of New Jersey is apparently pushing very heavily for a new sex education program, curriculum. And it apparently, from, again, the headlines, it talks about pushing it down to the kindergarten level. So maybe you could educate me, because I'm concerned about this, you know, I can understand it at higher ages, but at kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, where according to the paper, a child can be told that you really don't have a gender, you could be what you want to be, or you want to be what you want to be when you grow up, or something. And science is not mandatory anymore, I guess. So.
Thank you, Mr. Feison, but I think Dr. Di Toro, in his report, highlighted.
Is that under the health?
That's correct, yes.
The health, I thought it might be under that health.
Yes, that's exactly what that was related to.
How could I, and the citizens of Mala, access that information and understand how it's going to be implemented in the Mala school system?
Great question.
So my recommendation is, Dr. Bavino is in the audience, and she's working with the administrative team as well as the health and PE teachers in writing the curriculum. So the curriculum has not been written yet at the K through 5 level. Once they start working together and look at the, the standards, then they'll start developing the curriculum. But Dr. Bavino's been working with not only our, our teachers and our supervisors in district, but also at the county level to, to really gain an awareness of the scope of what the standards are asking and where they are placed in an age-appropriate manner.
Okay, well, I'll work with her, contact her.
She's, she's, she's pretty easy to work with.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great. I'm not easy, but as long as one of us is easy, it's thumbs up.
Thank you, Mr. Feison.
Thank you.
And, I'm actually here at Subal Yordo, Hampshire Road, Mala. Regarding, I will handle my son's case privately with the school, but wanted to share maybe something you all might not be thinking about when writing these policies. And I have two sons, one is 18 and one is 13, and they are who they are. My little guy, you know, we've spent a lot of years, you know, doing everything possible, and he is who he is. He is not the majority, he wishes he was, but he will not stick up for himself, he doesn't fight back, it's part of, part of his issue. And, you know, recently, he's had some issues in school, but one thing that's really, it's, it's just been very hard, because you have an Austin, you have a Van, and then you have my, my son, who basically, in school, we have this, the gender stuff that's going on. My son has a bit of a higher IQ, he's not spectrum, but he is black and white, so he doesn't fit into either category. What he doesn't understand, and I had some recent issues with him, is, you know, he was being picked on in school, he's being followed around at recess at 13 by some girls who are identifying as animals, furries, they call themselves. And, you know, according to the policies, I've looked them all up, I don't really know, I've spoken with the principal, I've asked what the policies are, but in my son's mind, you, you know, you're, he's very bright, and what he sees is, I've been taught English my whole life, I've got these girls following me, where he just wants to kick the ball with his friends. In our house, you're taught to respect everyone. I'm Sicilian, if I get a call from the school that my kid is disrespectful, he's getting dragged up by his dear love that day. We don't, we, we don't care who, I've always taught my kids, stay out of it, you don't, you respect everyone, but he doesn't understand what he, or how he could be expected if you're born a human. I don't care if you want to identify as a boy, girl, and if you are a boy, none of that matters, what matters is my son. You're born a human being, you've got a girl wearing fur, fur ears, wanting to be identified as a canine or a lizard, it's happening in your middle school, it's happening a lot, and it's causing him strife, and he doesn't get it, he doesn't, and so rather than tell the girl to take a hike at recess, which is what the other boys do, my son will stand there and defend himself, how he can't be expected to remember one of 80 pronouns that are these new pronouns, which pronouns aren't even part of this, but now they are, because apparently we're changing the rules. My son doesn't know what's going on, parents don't know what's, no one really knows, I asked the principal during this, because he was being picked on by some of these, these people, and then picked on also by another boy who is, just so happens to be black, and the boy flat out told him, I'm protected, because I'm a minority. There's a lot that's in these kids' brains that shouldn't even be there, that, it's just being talked about a lot, but since we're talking about it, my little boy now doesn't want to go to school, I can't get him to go to school. And what I would like to say is, the only one, it's not the school principal, not the guidance counselor, not the teachers, not therapy, the only one that could get him to go to school is Dr. Di Toro, who has been the height of professionalism in this whole story, because my son feels like no one cares, no one understands, like, he sees this as grammar, and, you know, if you want to talk with, you know, a pronoun, it's like a grammatical construct, it, it's given to, and maybe you can consider this when writing your policies. It's been taught to our children, and there's some children that remember this, some children that are actually black and white, that say, okay, this is to depict a fact about reality. So now I have to refer to this girl, who was a girl, who's now roaming around, making sure that I am acknowledging she's identifying as either an animal or boy, but I have to refer to her as a they, but it's a she, and or he, it's, it's, so here's my point.
Thank you.
Behavior, behavior. The statistics of truly being transgender or truly having struggles is quite small. There is no way medically that we have this many kids in the middle school that just wake up and are identifying. I want my kid to be in a place that there's discipline. Like, where do we draw the line here, like, and say, I'm sorry, no, you can't use the girls restroom, you're a boy, and the answer's no. It's like we've lost that we can't say no to kids anymore. I want my kid to be, I want him to be in an environment that there's discipline, because now what I have is I have a little boy who's traumatized because he's being bullied, he's refusing to go to school, he's absolutely terrified, our whole family is in shambles, I mean, what, and, and, and we're not, we're not fighting, we, we're not fighting that we disagree with the policy, we're not saying we don't agree with, we, we want to be respectful, but we don't fit into either category. He doesn't get it.
Well, thank you, thank you for sharing your personal story.
But what about the discipline, like, what do we do?
We appreciate your comment, and I'm glad to hear that you felt that Dr. Di Toro was helpful.
Beyond helpful.
And beyond helpful, and gold star to Dr. Di Toro on this one. So we, we thank you for your comment.
But what about with the policies, and like, how do we?
We will, we will take your comment under advisement, we thank you for sharing your personal story, and I'm sorry for your son's situation, and we thank you for your comment.
So as of tonight, there's nothing to tell me in terms of answering or anything for my, for my son's.
We, we thank you for your comment.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening, Tina and Zanna, Forest Road, Mala.
Do you want to take that? You can take the microphone off. Oh, there we go. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tina.
Tina.
I wanted to ask you guys, you know, about the big topic, the New Jersey health standards, they're getting implemented in September, correct?
Well, I think Dr. Di Toro answered the question, that we're looking at the curriculum K through 5, and if we're, Dr. Bavino, who's our director of curriculum, this is not curriculum that has been written K through 5, and that's going to be looked at over the summer, and they're going to be looking at it to make it age-appropriate for those students K through 5. Do you have a comment related to it?
Yeah, I'm really just appalled with the, did you guys look at it? Did anyone take a look at the New Jersey health standards?
Yes, there's a large document that Dr. Bavino, in particular, has made herself very familiar with.
Yeah, I just feel they're very inappropriate, they're not age-appropriate, and if we do want to opt out, what happens to the kids?
And again, all of that, as Dr. Di Toro, and if you want to just highlight it one more time, indicated that will, there will be a clear process, Ms. Tina, and we'll, we'll say it one more time, and Dr. Di Toro will explain it one more time.
Okay, because I know that, right now, my daughter's in eighth grade, and she's going to have it the last marking period, and I'm talking about now, what do I do now?
Sure, okay. So the process would be, Ms. Whalen, this is the principal at the ridge, has answered questions from parents specific to exactly what you're speaking of. And she'll walk you through the process along the lines of what your request is and what that would look like for your, for your, I'm sorry, your daughter?
Yeah.
Yes. So Ms. Whalen will be the point of contact there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tina. All right, motion to close meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. We are going to move, I need a motion, to recess, we're in a recess to executive session, we are not going to come back from that. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo. We are going to move, I need a motion, to recess, we're going to recess to executive session, we are not going to come back from that, and so we will be closing Zoom at this point. Motion to recess. Mr. Kuzmarski, second by Mr. Denise.